It is six o'clock PM. I will call this meeting of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order. You please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Posey.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
We do not have Mr. Newell or Mr. Morris today. Chief Stieglmeyer, you have the reading of casualties.
Good evening, Board. The following is the first responder casualty list for the period of March the 2nd through March the 15th of 2022. Senior Police Officer Robert Duran, Santa Fe Police Department, New Mexico, end of watch March 2nd, 2022. K-9 zero, Humphreys County Sheriff's Office, Tennessee, end of watch March 3rd, 2022. Trooper Tamar Bucci, Massachusetts State Police, Massachusetts, end of watch March 3rd, 2022. Corporal Benjamin Cooper, Joplin Police Department, Missouri, end of watch March 8th, 2022. Fire Chief John Pridemore, Clayton Fire Company, Delaware, end of watch March 8th, 2022. K-9 dash, Shepherdsville Police Department, Kentucky, end of watch March 9th, 2022. And Police Officer Jake Reed, also the Joplin Police Department, Missouri, end of watch March 11th, 2022.
Will you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. We'll now move to the recognition of guests and presentations. Our first item of business is swearing in of new police officers. Mr. McCord.
Hang on, Clay. Good evening, everybody. There we go. Thank you. Right on cue. I'd like to thank everybody for showing up tonight. I'd like to see, announce, and then talk about some of the old employees that have been here. I see some old friendly faces in the back. Good to see you guys. See some retirees from the police department that's come to help us and join us this evening. And I've seen a lot of friends and family and distinguished guests as well. We're here tonight to celebrate and welcome five new officers into the Miami Township Police Department and to say goodbye to one long-term officer of the Miami Township Police Department. But before we go on to tonight's festivities, I'd like to give the speech that I give to all new coming officers, and it's kind of like this. For those of you who don't know what I'm getting ready to do, this is kind of a little heritage of the police department and law enforcement in general. In case you ever wondered, as a police officer becomes a police officer, they're sworn in and they will be issued two badges. The first badge that they get is the badge that goes on your hat. This badge right here. Now, the police is a very honorable profession, and it's a very old profession. We've been around for a long time, and we've been charged and we have been entrusted with keeping the public peace and public safety. So what the badge on the hat symbolizes is that the officer needs to use their head, and they use their head to make good, clear, concise, non-biased decisions. The second badge that you receive is the one that goes upon your chest. Ironically, it's on the left side, which is above your heart. This is no coincidence. It's there so that you can show compassion to those that you serve and those that you have chosen to protect. As the Chief of the Miami Township Police Department, I expect that you will use your head to make good decisions and use your heart to be a good servant leader. That's something I demand out of each and every one of you. Now that that's over, let me introduce them to the five new members of my police department. Would you all come forward, please? Place that. There you go. To my immediate left is Curtis Green. Curtis is currently in his seventh year of working in the law enforcement. Curtis worked for two law enforcement agencies prior to accepting a position with the Miami Township Police Department, and Curtis is following in his father's footsteps, who was a police officer for the Huber Heights Division of Police for 24 years. Curtis is a graduate of the Clark State Police Academy in 2015, and he has an Associate Degree in Criminal Justice in Law Enforcement. Curtis is here today with his wife Danielle, who will have the honor of pinning his badge on him later this evening. Next to Curtis is Nick Peters. Nick Peters grew up in Van Daley, Ohio. He graduated from Butler High School. After high school, Nick attended the Ohio University, where he graduated the Bachelor's Degree in Sociology/Criminology. Nick is a 2017 graduate of the Sinclair Community College Police Academy and has prior police service with the Middletown Division of Police and the Sinclair Community College Police Department. Nick is married to his high school sweetheart Erin, and they have three children, I believe Erin just said, Mommy, thank you, and she'll be the one that'll be pinning Nick's badge on him this evening. Liam Foley. Oh, boy. Here we go. Liam graduated from Springboro High School in 2017. I think that makes you 23 years old. Just to kind of put things in perspective, and this really was an eye-opener to me, everybody. He has been alive 17 years. I have been a police officer longer than he's been alive by 17 years. That really kind of hits you right in the open gut when you see these people coming in. So, thank you for that, Liam. That was a gut check, and I appreciate you coming aboard. Liam is a 2021 graduate of the Butler Tech Police Academy, and this is his first-time police job. So congratulations on that, Liam. Liam is here tonight with his girlfriend Madison, his mother Jenny. I'm sorry, Ms. Jen Foley, I know I met your new husband, I do not remember his name, so please forgive me. Did your sister show up, Liam? And the sisters and the rest of the family, so welcome tonight. Liam will be having his badge pinned on him by his girlfriend Madison later on this evening. Mackenzie Pierce, Little Mac. Mackenzie is a recent graduate of the Clark State Police Academy, and this is Mackenzie's first full-time police job. Mackenzie holds a Bachelor of Arts Degree in Criminal Justice from Marshall University and plans on returning to school to obtain her Master's Degree in Homicide and Forensic Investigations. Mackenzie is here tonight with her grandmother Suzie Pierce, father Roy Pierce, fiancee Zemir Smith, son Mason Pierce, as well as other family and friends. Mackenzie's fiancee Zemir will have the honor of pinning her badge on later this evening. And finally, last but not least, Dakota. Remember, I told you, save the best for last. Dakota Cox. Dakota is a 2020 graduate of the Green County Police Academy. After graduating the police academy, Dakota was hired by the Perry Township Division of Police, where he has served as a police officer for about the last year. Dakota is here tonight with his fiancee Sarah Butman, also with Diane Butman, Abdul Butman, Deanna Nunez, Rafael Nunez, Lennox Nunez, Carol England, Ken England, and David Cox. Dakota's fiancee Sarah will have the honor of pinning his badge on later this evening. Now, now, Clay. Down here.
Okay. I state your name.
Could you look down the bar please, raise your hand. There you go.
I state your name. Do you hear my swear?
Do you hear my swear?
That I support the Constitution of the United States?
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio?
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the resolutions of Miami Township to govern County Ohio?
And the resolutions of Miami Township to govern County Ohio.
And that I will faithfully?
No, faithfully.
Honestly and impartially?
Honestly and impartially.
Disturb the duties?
Disturb the duties.
Of my position?
Of my position.
As a police officer for Miami Township?
As a police officer for Miami Township.
So help me God.
Put your badge on here, it's good to have a police. Ladies and gentlemen, I introduce you to the Miami Township five police officers of Miami Township Police Department.
Congratulations.
Chief Stieglmeyer, you also have the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, I do. Hopefully, we'll speed this along a little bit for everybody. As a saying goes, we're here also to say goodbye to a dear old friend. Todd, I'm not going to do it. We say the best for last. It is mixed feelings that I get to inform the Board of Trustees of the impending retirement of Detective Todd Comer. For the past three decades, Detective Comer has been a driving force here at the Miami Township Police Department. Todd began his career with Miami Township Police Department on September 14th, 1988, and I'm pretty sure half the people we just sworn in was not born, Todd, just so you know. Todd started as a reserve police officer. He quickly rose to the ranks. March 4th of 1990, Todd was promoted to a full-time police officer and was assigned to the Patrol Division. In May 17th of 1993, Todd was assigned to the Detective Bureau, and he has remained in that position ever since. A long time, my friend, a long time. During his tenure with the Miami Township Police Department, Todd has received over 30 letters of commendation. Received the 2021 Miami Township Police Officer of the Year. Received the 2021 Douglas L. Knight Humanitarian Award. Received the 2021 Mark Losi Service Award. Received the 2019 Miami Township Police Chiefs Award. As you can see, this is a pretty impressive career by anybody's standards. Congratulations, Todd. Todd's leadership, experience, and camaraderie would be greatly missed, and his shoes simply cannot be filled by one person alone. I would like to thank Todd's wonderful wife Ashley and his children for all their patience, dedication, and their support through Todd's career and to this police department. It's well appreciated. It is said that heaven has a special place for those who sacrifice their lives for the sake of others. Well, Todd, if that's true, my friend, you have a front-row seat when you go to the gates of heaven, because you have made a ton of sacrifices for others, and thank you. I would like for the members of Miami Township Police Department to stand. Whether you're present or passed, enjoy me in congratulating. Hey, I see David. Congratulations, Todd Comer, for a job well done.
Well, first of all, thank you. I didn't want to be a babbling idiot. I'm going to try. The babbling part, I might be able to control the idiot. I do. I have been truly blessed with God above my health, the friends and family of this community, the support. It just, you can't do this job alone, and had I been alone, I wouldn't have made it. Thirty-plus years of doing this, it'll get to you. But you always have a lot of fun, you get the support, and anything that you need, you just ask somebody and they take care of you. So I do appreciate the support coming out. I'm going to miss you all. Thank you.
Hey, Todd. If you could just stand over there for a second. Mr. Posey will have a proclamation, but before he gets to that, back in the early '90s, when I was a detective with Miami'sburg, Todd and I worked several cases, and I got the enjoyment of riding around with him for a while.
You remember it too.
Nine years ago.
I'm sorry? You remember it too.
Yes, I do. It was quite entertaining. Nine years ago, when I came here as chief, Todd was one of the ones that I relied heavily on to get to know the culture here, even though I worked for a city just on the other side of the interstate. And he will be sorely missed, not only within our department, but departments around here and the agencies around here. He was a leader. He is a leader. I have no doubt that some people will be giving him a call anyway, whether he answers his phone or not, down in Tennessee is another question, but you will be missed. You were one of the finest, and I congratulate you on your retirement.
Thank you.
Mr. Cole, will you join me in front of the desk?
Let's speed over here a little bit so everybody can see. I have a proclamation for the Board of Trustees. Whereas Todd A. Comer has been an employee with the Miami Township Police Department since September of 1988, and whereas Todd A. Comer, who served with distinction as a police officer with the Miami Township Police Department, has over 33 years of dedicated service to citizens of Miami Township, has submitted a letter and intended to retire. Whereas Todd A. Comer has served as a dedicated law enforcement officer and mentor during his outstanding career, and whereas Todd A. Comer is last day of employment is Friday, March 18th, 2022, and therefore be a result, Miami Township Board of Trustees wish to publicly thank Todd A. Comer for his exceptional and uncompromised services to the citizens of Miami Township, and we wish you a healthy, happy, and prosperous retirement from Miami Township Police Department.
It's only on there about six times. We're now getting into the business part of the meeting, but we will excuse any members of the Township Police Department or their families that wish to go to the reception for both the new swearing-in and the retirement. We'll take a minute to allow everybody to exit. We'll go ahead and begin our business as the last guests are filtering out. There was one guest I forgot to recognize, and now that everybody's left, I feel a little bad about it. We do have Chief Brandon Barnett here from the Miami Valley Fire District sworn in last month, and we'll ask you to speak during the Department Head section, but I apologize for not introducing you at your first meeting during the guest part, when we actually had guests today, so I hope you'll excuse that. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I move that we approve the consent agenda as submitted. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Next item is new business, Resolution Number 30-2022, a resolution to sell property to a retiring employee. Administrator Hess.
Good evening, Board. You just saw Officer or Detective Comer is retiring this week, per Article 34, Section 1 of the collective bargaining agreement that allows retiring officers in good standing to purchase their weapon at $4.01. So Resolution Number 30-22 is to allow Detective Comer to purchase his firearm.
Thank you. Mr. Cole, any questions?
No.
Moving on to the public comments section, do we have anyone from the public wishing to speak today? No one's approaching the podium. We will now move into consideration of resolutions and motions. I will make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 30-2022, a resolution to sell property to a retiring employee. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
I will make a motion, excuse me, to open the public hearing to discuss Resolution Number 31-2022, a resolution to adopt the draft, to review the draft comprehensive plan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Comprehensive Plan Review Public Hearing is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will present the draft comprehensive plan. All proponents will have the opportunity to speak. All opponents will have an opportunity to speak. A time limit of three minutes will be placed on each of the speakers, and if you do choose to speak, please give your name and address for the record. The Board will close the public hearing prior to taking final action. The Board will now hear the report of staff. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing have been met?
The requirements have been met.
Do you have a recommendation from the Miami Township Zoning Commission, and would you please present the draft plan at this time?
I do have a recommendation, Board, and I'd be happy to present at this time. Good evening. I'm very happy and excited to be before you tonight to present the draft of the plan, the comprehensive plan that has been a two-year-long process initiated in late 2019, in which we are working on a new revised version of a guiding comprehensive plan for the community. The main purpose of the presentation tonight, Board, you have been provided with a full copy, full draft of the draft plan, so I would like to touch on some of the process that went into the creation of the plan, as well as the steps going forward of how the plan will be used and integrated, and in doing so, we'll talk about some of the major updates that are a part of this comprehensive plan. So a key portion of the creation of this plan was public participation. It is a very common issue in the planning profession that a plan is created and then sits on the shelf. But one of the key tenets to create a plan that will be used and will be actively used is to involve the public and get buy-in from the public. A comprehensive plan without public participation is essentially no more than a paperweight. So I'd like to talk for a minute about some of the public participation opportunities that were provided to the public and some of the amazing feedback that we received. First, we created a website, planmiamityoungship.com. Throughout the process, we have used this to share pertinent information about the plan, as well as provide links for members of the public to review the draft plan as it's come along. We will then use it going forward to post sections of the plan and provide key information to reference out to residents, business owners, developers going forward. Steering Committee was assembled at the onset of the plan. Steering Committee has 16 members, as well as staff, meeting with the steering committee. We had nine committee meetings throughout the process, several steering committee-specific surveys, as well as direct feedback throughout the process as chapters were drafted, presented to the steering committee for direct comments, and integrated throughout the process. In terms of general broad public input, we had two planning workshops. These were advertised through social media, local advertising boards, but was a fantastic way at the onset of the plan to bring the public in and determine what the vision and goals of the public were, as well as specific land use thoughts and recommendations. We had three surveys that were broad community surveys, a kickoff survey at the very beginning of the plan, a planning workshop survey that ran concurrently with the planning workshops, and targeted planning discussion area surveys in which key areas of the township that staff and the steering committee determined could use further advice from the public were discussed. Again, residents local to those areas provided excellent feedback on how they felt those areas should be used going forward and were ultimately integrated into the land use plan. We had stakeholder Zoom meetings. These Zoom meetings were requested. Staff opened ourselves to be available at any time for any specific group throughout the process who had specific concerns. We were fortunate enough to meet with residents of Oakwood Village, as well as several residents from the agricultural west side of the township to discuss specific goals and bring those into the fold of the plan. And then ultimately, after the plan was presented in its original draft form, we then were able to take the final draft form, open it up for a 30-day public comment review period at the request of the Board of Trustees, and ran that through the month of November of 2021. Afterwards, the plan was presented on February 2nd to the steering committee. The steering committee unanimously recommended that the plan be forwarded for review and adoption to the zoning commission and ultimately the Board of Trustees. So next steps, adoption of the plan is the next step to getting this thing off the ground and starting its use. The zoning commission reviewed the plan March 2nd, 2022, and in a 5 to 0 vote, recommended adoption of the draft comprehensive plan. So the next step tonight, reviewing with the Board of Trustees. So again, going forward, the plan will be implemented in four key ways. I've listed them here. We'll get into a little bit more depth on some of these items. The first way that the plan will be implemented is directly through land use recommendations in the land use map and the development guide of the document. I've shown a screenshot here of the land use map legend and a copy of the land use map itself. This will be directly referenced in applications, staff reports, in public hearings, in the case of a rezoning project, of a development project, to again, link back real on-the-ground projects to this guiding document. Second way, goals and initiatives are listed in very chapter-specific settings. We have health and wellness, infrastructure plans, technology and innovation, sense of place. These chapters are guiding tenets of the plan, and again, are referenced back in land use decisions, but ultimately have their own goals and initiatives for, here's the long list, future planning projects, modifications to community development standards, capital projects, community art and placemaking, pursuit of grant funding, and may have their community-driven projects. I've included a list of some initiatives here. Certainly, they're much more in the plan, but just to give you an idea of what some of these initiatives are, in some cases, the plan recommends more planning. One of these items is a Parks Master Plan. This plan recommends that we spend time to take a deep dive into our parks, how they're serving our communities, and how the pedestrian connectivity to these parks is implemented throughout the community. Health and wellness, again, maintaining these public open spaces. You can see there's some overlap between some of these initiatives, but ultimately they all come back to the land use plan, land use map, to make land use recommendations and drive community-oriented factors in review of development. Another way the plan will be implemented is by directly implementing and codifying the comprehensive plan review and amendment process into the Miami Township zoning resolution. This is something that our department and the steering committee felt was very important for this plan. It is relatively uncommon for a comprehensive plan to be directly implemented into a zoning resolution, but again, to drive that implementation of the plan and the goals therein, referencing that directly in review, say findings of fact for rezoning, is this project meeting the goals of the comprehensive plan, and how is it doing so, is an important way to keep this plan actively engaged in our decision-making processes. Then another way is through data in the document and the appendix to inform township decisions. Some of this data directly influences decisions the township should make. Is our population growing? Is it shrinking? What's our housing look like? Do we have affordable housing? Is our housing stock aging? Some of these key demographics will help guide discussions with developers, but then again, decisions ultimately township-wide level. Another type of data in the document, there are several staff-driven research projects that were implemented into the plan, such as a growth projection study determining if we continue to grow at our current rate, what would the potential capacity for township population be? How do you adjust that by increasing density in other ways? Again, a township-driven study. As well as survey information throughout the process, feedback from the public participation methods. These have been directly implemented and referenced in the appendix of the document to ensure that public participation and feedback stays relevant and is at the forefront of the decisions that ultimately wound up being goals and initiatives within the plan. And finally, the last step of implementation, the monitoring and evaluation of the plan. This plan is very specifically drafted to allow potential updates going forward, to ensure that the plan is constantly referencing on-the-ground conditions, community goals as initiatives are being met, how do we take that another step further? So there are several layers of evaluation here. First is staff level, things like updating census data. We intend to bring back a report as soon as our census data is released from the 2020 Census. Fortunately, townships and minor civil subjects... Fortunately, townships and minor civil subdivisions are some of the last groups to receive census data in its entirety, so as soon as that's made available, we'll bring that to you, as well as spelling and grammar, as we may find that through the continued use of the plan. But then taking into public hearing amendments, things like updating our goals and initiatives as they are met, and we want to take that another step further. Land use designations, as on-the-ground conditions change, the way that we foresee the use of neighboring land may change, so to ensure that the plan is constantly up to date, we would like to have a avenue to pursue updates of the land use map. Development capacity factors, land use impact factors, these are the things that we are reviewing specifically in rezoning projects, like how is the land grading changing? How much natural growth is being removed? What are the hours of operation of the potential new use? Some of these things that we review to ensure that a land use is appropriate for the area that it's being proposed in. The next couple of slides, Chris and I discussed that the plan, we feel turned out to be a pretty good-looking document. Ultimately, we worked hard to ensure that the document is color-coordinated, bright, full of pictures of our community, to ensure that it is a accessible document that is enjoyable to read and fun to flip through. So again, ultimately, we picked some individual colors that, you know, we tried to use throughout the document to create consistency in our design, and ultimately, we are very happy with the way the document turned out. So with that, Board, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to discuss.
Any questions?
No.
The Board will now hear from all proponents for the adoption of the plan. Does anyone wish to speak? The Board will now hear from all opponents for the, from the adoption of the plan. Does anyone wish to speak? Having seen no one wish to speak, I will now make a motion to close the public hearing for the comprehensive plan review.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Having closed the public hearing, I will make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the plan, excuse me, the 2022 Miami Township Comprehensive Plan. Therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees adopts the 2022 Miami Township Comprehensive Plan, the plan, and upholds the zoning commission recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Move on to the next item of the agenda. A public hearing to discuss Resolution Number 32-2022, a resolution regarding a nuisance abatement. The following public hearing for abatement of a nuisance is being held pursuant to Section 505.86, Section 505.87, and Section 505.871 of the Ohio Revised Code, and concerns the property located at 5562 South Union Road, Miami'sburg, Ohio 45342. I will make a motion to open the public hearing for review of a nuisance abatement. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
The nuisance abatement hearing is now open. The following will be the order in which this public hearing will proceed. Staff will present the nuisance abatement case. All proponents of the case, those in favor of the abatement of the nuisance, will have an opportunity to speak. The defendant in the case will have the opportunity to cross-examine all witnesses. The defendant will have an opportunity to speak and present evidence. The defendant is allowed to be represented by an attorney and present evidence or witnesses on their behalf. All opponents of the case, those opposed to the abatement of the nuisance, will have an opportunity to speak. A time limit of five minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. The Board will close the public hearing prior to taking final action. Are there any persons who wish to speak, testify, or present evidence in this nuisance abatement case?
Andrew Rice, Miami Township Employee, 2700 Lyons Road.
Will you please raise your right hand and affirm an oath that I will read to you. Do you solemnly swear that any testimony you shall give before this Board of Trustees shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. If so, answer, "I do."
I do.
The Board will now hear the report of staff. Mr. Rice, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met?
They have.
Will you please present the nuisance abatement case at this time?
Good evening, Board. You recall, in a previous Township trustee meeting, I presented a nuisance abatement case, 5562 South Union Road, and this case focuses on two inoperable vehicles being stored at the listed address. Parcel is located here, roughly halfway in between Bear Creek Road and Manning Road. We'll start off with some case history. Initially, October 6th, case was open, two black vehicles photographed on blocks and jacks without front wheels, and an unregistered commercial van. An initial notice of violation was sent October 7th, 2021. Moving on in the case history, November 1st, 2021, no further action had been taken to correct the violations present at the property. Doors to both vehicles had been left open, cars remained on the blocks and jacks. December 16th, 2021, doors on both vehicles been left open, the white commercial van had been removed from the property, which is why an additional notice of violation was sent to the owner to clarify the property was still in violation. As you can see from these images, the vehicles remain on jacks, blocks, front wheels still missing, and doors open to the elements. As of today, March 15th, 2022, two pictures provided show the violation as it lies today. As you can see, not much has changed from previous pictures, with the exception of the removal of the white commercial van. So this, according to the Ohio Revised Code, this violation meets what the ORC lays out in Section 505.173E. Junk motor vehicles, as defined in this section, are three model years old or older, apparently inoperable, front ends of both vehicles have been placed on blocks and jacks, and the front wheels have been removed, and extensively damaged, including but not limited to, missing wheels, tires, engine, or transmission, of which the first two apply. If the Board elects to abate the nuisance, the property owner will be notified and given 14 days to remove the vehicles. If the vehicles remain on the property, Sandy's Towing will remove the vehicles. Vehicle removal will cost $0 for the township, and costs associated with the removal are charged to the vehicle owner by Sandy's, should the owner choose to pursue getting the vehicle back in their possession. I can take any questions that the Board has at this time, if you have any.
Mr. Culp, any questions?
None.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. The Board will now hear from all proponents for the abatement of the nuisance. Seeing none, the Board will now hear from the property owner. Seeing no one, the Board will now hear from all opponents of abatement of the nuisance. Seeing no one, I will make a motion to close the public hearing for the nuisance abatement case. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I will make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 32-2022, a resolution regarding a nuisance abatement. Therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees orders the owners and/or lien holders to abate the nuisance within 14 days of the date of the mailing of this resolution, or that the owner and/or lien holder of said property may, within 14 days of the date of the mailing of this resolution, enter into an agreement with the Board of Trustees, providing for either the property owner or the Board of Trustees to abate said nuisance, and be it further resolved, if such nuisance is not abated within 14 days, the Miami Township Board of Trustees authorizes staff to contract the abatement of the nuisance and assess the cost of the property tax duplicate as recited in the formal resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
We are now moving into Department Head comments. Are there any Department Head comments? And I'll call on Mr. Barnett to please join us at the podium and introduce himself and let us know what's going on at the Fire District.
Good evening, Board. So really, for the Fire District today, Firefighters Company, the Federal Credit Union, actually donated, I believe 50, I haven't got the total count, but carbon dioxide detectors. It's something that my former employer, they did. So Shannon, who runs the company, actually called me, she said, "Would you guys be interested in that?" And I asked the Battalion Chief, Harp, I asked him, "Have you ever, if we ever received those?" And he said, "No, I don't think we ever received them from them." So that was a good thing for us, something new for us, and hopefully it'll be an annual. We just put it on our website, I'm sorry, on our Facebook page. It'll be on a first-come, first-served basis. They'll call the district and we'll be able to install them. So hopefully by tomorrow, we'll start getting some phone calls, we'll be able to install those. Other than that, really nothing major is going on with the, with the district, besides we just got rid of Air 54, so that got sold yesterday, and hopefully it'll be out of our bay, and it was an operable vehicle that'd been there for a couple of years, and they just didn't know what they were gonna do with it until I took over and said, "Well, we're gonna get rid of it." So right now, that's about all that's going on in the district, and we've got a meeting coming up on the 24th, so that'll be our next board meeting. Any questions from me, for the district?
No, I just want to introduce, let everybody introduce you to the staff. I know you've met all these people already, and you're doing a great job of getting yourself introduced, and we appreciate you attending this meeting, and hopefully you'll be able to do so on maybe a monthly basis. We know the city meets on the same day, has the same schedule as we do, so hopefully you'll be able to split that up and inform us as to what's going on outside of my role as a member of the Board of Fire District Board of Trustees.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other Department Head comments? Mr. Snyder.
Good evening, Board. Just have a couple of quick comments. First, I just wanted to thank Alex Carlson and the rest of our current and former staff, as well as all of the business owners, residents, and others that participated in preparing the comprehensive plan that you reviewed tonight. Took quite a bit of time, there was a lot of staff time put into reviewing, editing, formatting, working at the workshops, putting the public notices out, and putting all of that together through what was some challenging times over the last couple of years, trying to put a document like that together, and a lot of virtual meetings in some instances. So just wanted to, again, publicly acknowledge all of the work that went into that document, and appreciate all the staff that supported that. Also, again, wanted to note, we do have a new planner onboard in our office as of this week, Max Merritt, from, he graduated from the University of Cincinnati with a degree in planning, so you may see him around the office more and more, as we get him up to speed on some of our projects and get him onboard. So also, just to note, we did attend a meeting of the Tax Incentive Review Council this week, Mr. McCord and myself. We did note to the county that Brixton Meyer has completed the 10th year of their 10-year tax abatement, so they have successfully met their obligations. They had committed to creating 10 new jobs. They in fact created 39 total jobs, 18 new jobs, which are attributable to that agreement with a payroll of about $1.3 million, so we think that has been a success. They are also a member of the Miami Crossing Joint Economic Development District, so we appreciate their support of that district as well, and that has been a successful project, but they will now be coming off of their, their tax abatement process at this point. So with that, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. It's always good to see a successful development project come to fruition. Department Head comments, Mr. Culp.
I have none.
I would only like to remark that this is, again, Dayton is hosting the first four. I believe at least some of the teams are staying within the township, if my convoy on 75, police-led convoy on 75 was any evidence, and again, enjoy everybody's basketball and hope everybody stays safe. We have no work session, we have no executive session. I will close the meeting at 6:44.